Think positive.
Right?
No.
The email from the new website.
I like your attitude.
Used to have the website.
I have a passive attitude.
Why do you get to the employee to log in?
Okay, that's confusing. I'll tell you after. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Human Services Committee. If we can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the letter of the United States of America and to the request for which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I can have the clerk take the role, please. Commissioner Samasco.
Present.
Commissioner Baldwin. Commissioner Bohm.
Here.
Commissioner Turello.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Van den Bosch.
Here.
Commissioner Beaton.
Present. Seeing no additions or deletions or changes to the agenda, do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
Support. Or make a motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have a couple citizens wishing to be heard this evening. The first up is Jamie Murray. Topic, Commissioner Bohm.
First, I'd like to remind Commissioner Bohm what the difference is between him and us, the people. We are private citizens. Nobody cares what we're doing. You are an elected official. Everybody cares what you're doing. You chose to run for that seat, and you opened yourself up to public praise, public scrutiny, and public opinion. Your position doesn't give you power to bully and retaliate against people when you don't like what they have to say about you or your actions. It seems you believe that it does. I'm sure you are aware that last week it came to light that you and your buddy, namely TJ Schwaehofer, was behind the flyers being distributed that contained what you wanted people to believe about my family's life story. One of the most disturbing stories was that I was raped and Kevin was a product of that. Who and why would you attach yourself to that at all? Let me be clear. I have absolutely no issue with you and your people telling our story. I've lived through it thus far, and I'm good. I do have a huge issue with you sharing lies and made-up versions of my family's life story, and that is what you all did. I think it's safe to say that any reasonable person can assume that this was done on your behalf, given the fact that it was distributed in two places: your boat race tent in Moore Water Brewery. And let's not forget the huge banner you had hanging on your tent, calling it the Corruption Tent. Real mature. It seems integrity isn't your strong suit. Maybe you would like to explain what your intent was. Was it to shut Kevin up? Was it to shut all of us up? Was it to interfere with my run for state rep? Maybe all of the above. Or maybe it was just that you're a bully who believes he has a level of privileged power and can go after people that make him mad or offend him. What are you doing engaging in this behavior? You are a county commissioner, for God's sake. And this is just one of the horrible things you did to try and hurt my family. You literally employed your family and your friends, and I believe Sheriff Matt King, or he employed you first, in your efforts to try and hurt my family for the past couple of years. We have known TJ Schwaehofer for a long time. TJ had absolutely no dog in this fight, other than some strange allegiance to you, which you would think that being a father and a business owner, you would know better. Obviously not. But rumor has it, I was told, that you get him a lot of work at Magnum. Maybe that's it. Not in my best day would I use anyone to do this type of crap for me or with me. And my friends would never ask me to try and hurt and destroy people on my behalf. TJ also said that we should do our homework, so we know who published it. He said he wasn't smart enough to do it. And considering he thought distributing it was okay, I can definitely agree with that.
If you could wrap it up, please. You get three minutes.
Again, I think any reasonable person would believe that if your best buddy TJ knows who it was, that you also know who published it. Maybe you'd like to share that information here tonight. It's your --
If you could, please wrap it up.
It's your --
Has been three minutes?
Yeah. Okay, I'll come back and finish. Thank you.
Kevin Linky. Topic, Bohm.
So I'm gonna kind of piggyback on what my mom was just talking about. Jeff, you know, last week, I think it was, you and your buddy Chris Paul were setting up your little outdoor VIP area down in the plaza, because you and Chris think you own the plaza, you think you own St. Clair, and you don't realize that you're not allowed to have special privileges like that. You're a county commissioner. You're not a private citizen. So you don't get to set up your little area. And you told me that that was the Chamber of Commerce doing that. Well, where's the agreement? Show me where the Chamber's setting it up and it's not you. Because all last summer, when you had your little VIP area set up, I was getting messages every weekend that you're sitting there giving alcohol to minors, you're walking in with a box full of liquor. And I'll tell you what, it's time for this commission to put him in check. I don't know what you guys are afraid of. He's a fucking nobody. He is a nobody. And I don't know why you're afraid of him. Or I don't know if it's Tori's boss you're afraid of, Gary, or what it is. But it's time for you all to hold him accountable for his actions. I didn't see Commissioner Van den Bosch in the VIP area. I didn't see Commissioner Rushing, or Commissioner Turello, or any of the other commissioners in there. We see Jeff there. It's bullshit, and it's time that it needs to stop. And you guys are responsible for this. You have to hold him accountable. It's time to have a talk with him and find out what's going on, because he's an embarrassment to this county, and he's embarrassing the hell out of all of you. He's just, he's rogue. I mean, he literally, this is how absurd him and his friends are. They took bike racks, and they put it around a flower bed, so they can have their own little area to drink in. Grow up, dude. You're not in college anymore. If you want to go out and act like some frat boys, some adolescent, resign from your seat, go be a private citizen, and work in the private sector. Because the stuff you're doing in the public sector is absolute bullshit. It's childish, it's adolescent, and it's 100% an ethical violation of your office. You can't be getting favors, Jeff. Which that means you can't go sit in a little area, you can't be doing all this stuff you're doing. And like my mom said with those flyers, we now know that you were tied to that. Because your buddy Chris Paul dined out TJ, TJ dined you out. So, you know, if you have something to say to me, say it to me. Because I come here every two weeks and say it to you. I showed up when you were setting up your bike racks in front of you. Grow a set. Come at me directly, Jeff. Quit using all your little minions and all your little lappies to do your bidding. Come get me. And we can deal with it. Because I'll tell you what, you put that flyer out, which said my mom was raped, and that's why my dad's name wasn't on my birth certificate, said that I beat my girl, or my ex, with an inter-lives-in-law's daughter. It was full of lies. And you know it. See, the difference between you and I, Jeff, is the shit I say about you, it's true, and everybody knows it. You're a drunk. You drink and drive in the community. You have a bar set up at Eddie. You have all kinds of bad behavior you engage in, and it's all true, and everybody knows it. Now, you want to talk about me? We can talk about my past, or the way I act and all that, but let's keep it truthful. Because the bullshit lies you're putting out there and having your buddies put out there, you're gonna be held accountable, and you're gonna be pulled into a deposition soon on that. So I hope you're ready.
Are there any other citizens wishing to address the board? Seeing none? No updates, any conceptual initiatives tonight?
None.
Moving on to old business. Six A Child and Adolescent Health Center grant for Elgin Act. Is there a motion?
Well, we're gonna need to have a motion. I'll make the motion to send it to full board. Second. And now we're gonna have a discussion, correct?
Yes.
Of course, we all received, if I could, we all received a letter in support of this from both school districts. I still have the same concerns that were brought up by Joy. And in both letters, they said that policies will be set up after the fact. And that concerns me, because if the Health Department gets people in those positions, we don't know what those policies are and how they're gonna be instructing the children at the school over 14 years of age. Of course, state law dictates what can be done and what couldn't. But the policy would also be able to address the emergency situation, which was addressed in the letters that was given to all of us. In an emergency situation, they do not have to contact the parents. One person's emergency may not be another person's emergency, and that concerns me. Because if somebody says, no, that person needs to be, whatever the subject is, and I can go off course here a little bit and come up with some things that I don't agree with, but if we're gonna have a health officer or a health person directing the children at our two school districts, and they can deem anything that they potentially an emergency without contacting the parents.
We do, we do have Liz here. Maybe she can address that concern for you?
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't see her. Oh, yeah, if you would, please. Thank you.
I brought our nursing director, Amy Bishop, with us too, for specifics on policy.
And if I could ask you?
Yes.
Because I forgot my hearing aids. He set me up with this. Please talk into the mic.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll speak loud.
Can you hear the name Liz King, right?
Yes. Yep.
Go ahead.
So, your specific question, is it around policy, or setting the policy afterwards?
Well, I don't know what policy potentially it's gonna say. Potentially, and I could go both sides, take the negative side or the positive side. Positive, I could agree with everything in the policy, but this is gonna be done after the $180,000 for each school district, correct?
Well, not necessarily.
$180,000 for both?
It is $180,000 for both, correct? But the policies, I shared with Commissioner Samasco, we really would want to base those off the current policies that exist for our teen health center now. They would be very similar. We ran under those policies when we were out in Yale for those two years, when we did a CMH contract as well. So a lot of those policies I've shared, I'm happy to send them to you as well in a separate email, so you could look at them. But when they refer to policy being set, I feel like a lot of that policy is already established. There's a lot, we talked about with Commissioner Turello last week, and there's some additional assurances that probably need to be, that do need to be added to those policies and beef them up a little bit about parents, parent involvement, parent first when consent comes in, and some clarifying issues.
And, you know, since you got your position, I appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
So I do, if I ever have a concern, I'm gonna call you anyways.
Yeah, you should.
So I do appreciate the job that you're doing.
Thank you, thank you. Was there other questions?
Just while you're here, I'll make some comments. This came up, Joy asked some questions at the last meeting. We took a little break to follow up on some things. And since, I talked to Liz King, I've talked to Kirk Sutton, the superintendent out in Yale. I had looked at, back in February, I can't tell you how I appreciated Liz King seeing me in February. I wanted all the policies they had. Took a flash drive, she gave me over a thousand documents, just because I asked. And that's really, you know, outstanding. There was really not even a question asked. I mean, she trusted me enough to look at it. Then when this issue came up, I did look at those, but it was a lot, I mean, to find it. And then she kindly sent stuff to Joy. And not only did she send the existing policies, the forms for parental consent, the policies for seeking parental consent, as almost a default position, the state law that carves out certain exceptions, it's not just anybody's emergency is anybody's emergency. It's parents are not able to contact, life-threatening care, certain STDs, certain carb-outs, some counseling, limited to a certain amount of counseling time. So there are statutes for kids between the age of 14 and 18 that cover that. But Liz provided that. Then she provided the particulars to Joy and myself, and even highlighted them. And then I asked her to, she's done everything I've ever asked, and I really appreciate that. I mean, that's how you gain my confidence, because I was here during last year, that's why I ran for this office, to get back on the board, because there was so much turmoil, so much gyration on all these issues, some of it legitimate, some of it just fear for fear itself. And you've alluded to a lot of fears that I had, a lot of concerns I had. So I did ask Liz, I said, could you do me an email on the types of things that this clinic would provide in Yale? And Kirk Sutton in Yale was very big on having this out there. It's an underserved area. They provide things like primary care, diagnosis, flu infections, keeping kids out of class, preventative care, healthcare assessments, vision, hearing screening, health education, mental health care, these types of things. The concern I had, and I've discussed it with Liz, the current policy is clear, in a number of cases, and in fact, what Kirk Sutton sent me, that I sent every commissioner, the letter from Kirk Sutton, indicating they want parental consent. They want the first step to be contact a parent, they want parental involvement. And when I told Kirk Sutton last week, I said, well, my thing, look, nobody's talking to my kid without me knowing it, period. I don't care what the state law says, I'm not gonna fund anything where someone's talking to my kid without my permission. And he says, well, you really can't do that. I said, well, why? Well, sometimes it's issues of the parent being the problem. Drug addicts, sexual abuse, physical abuse, emotional abuse, drug situations. I said, okay, you know, so he clarified that for me, changed my position. Then my concern was, talking to Liz, well, how do you, I just want to make sure that the Health Department monitors that. And she said, it goes right into the MRA, the electronic medical record. And then what she did tell me, that's not in policy, the only little piece that I would ask that they look at, is to make sure that whenever a child is spoken to without the consent of the parent, for good cause, they document it in the medical record, but also document it at the Health Department, and just monitor that. I've had no complaints, I've had no issues. I know there's a big group in Yale who's very concerned about that. There's not really a problem there. So a lot of us fear of what could happen. And I'm confident in our Health Director, I'm confident with the policies that are in place, I'm confident with the history out in Yale, I've talked to people on the school board, you know, so I've done my due diligence on that. And one thing you point out too, in your email you sent me, which was kind, of all of the confidential contact, it was only 2%, just a hair over 2% of all the visits. That those were confidential, everything else was consented, and they've got forms for the consent, withdrawal of consent, those to parents, MyDay Health there, whatever you called it, the forms. It's quite a lot of work, it's a good system, it's gonna provide a lot of benefit. So I'm comfortable sending that to full board, and I appreciate you being here and not only giving us the time to look at it. Because last year, people were here just up in arms about this whole situation, and this is the conversation we need to have on the record here today, so they know that our Health Director cares. Carrie Hepdick told me, had high confidence, you've got my confidence. Well, just, if something comes up, I'll call you. If there's a problem, you'll hear about it. But you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
And that's my, that's my two cents here.
Right, I appreciate that. And just to reiterate what you said, so we looked at very closely those number of confidential visits, and it is documented in our EMR, we do keep track of that closely, and so we could easily pull that out. And that's something we will monitor and report back. I think the Board of Education and the parents are concerned, you know, at the number that we're seeing confidentially, and it really is quite low, 2% of our total visits. And we'll keep track of that, it is easily monitored, and we're happy to report that back out.
May I just, one moment? Thank you. I just want to say thank you for taking time for both of you to see me, because I know I was late to asking questions, and so I apologize for that. But I did find comfort in the things that you've submitted to me, that I was able to go through. And obviously, our kids have been through a lot these last few years. And they're very important to make sure that their care is first and foremost, and I thank you for allowing me to have more time to do that. And I'm hoping that however this resolves, or however this plays out, that it's best for everyone involved. But I still think parental consent is the biggest thing, too.
Yeah, in our conversation, you know, we support that as well. Parent involvement, there's many different assurances on how to get parents involved and how to keep them involved, and we're on board with that, too. We agree that parents, parent involvement is going to go very far for the students that are there. We talked to you about the ways to do that. So we appreciate you coming in, taking time out of your schedule to come in with us. So thank you for that conversation and that relationship building as well.
Thank you. I just know that when I was that age, I wasn't a very good historian on family health. And so I'm thinking, I'm sure teenagers aren't any different than what they were back then. So I just think it's important to have that relationship with the parent. So I thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want to say that I absolutely agree, and I want everybody to understand that I worked at Teen Health as a nurse for three years, coordinated the center in Port Huron. And it is always ideal and utmost important to have the parents consent because of the history factor. The Michigan law that was put into place is to cover those students that don't have the support at home. They're the ones that kind of fall through the cracks, that the parents aren't able or are having difficulties, they have certain barriers, health issues, or mental health issues, or substance abuse issues, where they're not able to do this for the child. And so the Michigan law, as far as the confidential service was, or they just don't have the relationship with their parents, that Michigan law is there to help those students. It's the miniscule amount, it's there in case for those students. But as a nurse, absolutely, and as the providers, they want that parent involvement. That is our goal. Michigan law is just there to help those that don't have that relationship with the parents. And to protect the health of those students so that they still get care. Because anything medical, infection that's known is never good, you know? If you don't know you have it, you let it go, it can cause permanent damage. So that's why Michigan law was put into place for those students.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion and support? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item B, Child and Adolescent Healthcare Center grant for Yale.
Make a motion to send it to full board.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just reiterate what's on the record, reference item A.
Ditto. Or is it, I ditto, yeah, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to new business, the Commission on Aging Appointments. We do have the two individuals in the room tonight that we're asking you to take a look at. The Commission on Aging has two positions open, one is in District Five, and the other is a member at large.
I would bank the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. There are no other Human Services matters this evening. Item nine, for information only, we did receive the Department May Points of Interest. May I have a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 10, Receive and File packets.
Make a motion.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the Judiciary Public Safety Committee to order a roll call, please.
Commissioner Samasco.
Present.
Commissioner Baldwin. Commissioner Beaton.
Present.
Commissioner Bohm.
Here.
Commissioner Turello.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Van den Bosch.
Here.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Any questions, Hon? Hearing on all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to citizens to be heard, first we have Kevin Linky.
This time I want to talk about, I kind of touched on this a couple weeks ago, you guys had, you were approving some funding for court-appointed attorneys and stuff of that nature, that was one of the agenda items. And I talked about my personal situation. Everyone knows the custody case I got going on. During the proceedings of my custody case, a guardian ad litem was appointed for my daughter. And this appointment was done suus sponte by Judge Thomason, and it was Amberine Ameth that he appointed as the GAL in my case. And there's no reason for a GAL in my case. And the reason I'm bringing this up to the board is, the reason I'm bringing this --
Talking to the mic, Kevin, I can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry. The reason I'm bringing this up to the board is, you guys approved the funding for the courts, basically. You guys are kind of, you finance the courts. And there's contracts out there for these court-appointed attorneys, for the county GAL, for the whole, the little group they have, whatever. And I know what their funding is, I know what they're supposed to be getting per hour. There's supposed to be contracts to show all this. Well, the court won't give us the contracts. I know some individuals from the county have attempted to get these contracts. But the real issue is Amberine, the pay she's getting. And Carrie is aware of this, she saw the emails and the stuff, the appointment of Amberine, at a very elevated pay rate. Judge Thomason approved her pay rate at $150 an hour, when the county GAL is only supposed to get, be getting $60 an hour. And to date, Amberine Ameth has received upwards of $40,000 of taxpayer money from the county. And it was such an anomaly that that amount was approved, that when Carrie and some of the accounting people saw it, they reached out to the court and said, what's going on here? Why is this such an elevated rate being paid to Amberine, when we have a set rate for a GAL? This appointment has never been done before, it was said it was a special appointment. In the history of the St. Clair County Courts and the family courts, no GAL. courts, no G A L has ever been appointed the way Amberine was appointed. No G A L has ever been approved at the pay rate she was given. The county G A L, which I still believe is Ms. Mary Kelly, she gets $60 an hour. And that's to handle her entire caseload for the year. Amberine's getting $150 an hour just for my case. And I think she's approved at like $28,000 is the totality of her yearly contract. So that $28,000, Amberine's responsible for maybe 100 kids, whatever it is. A lot of work. In just my case, she's made almost $40,000 of taxpayer money. I think it's something the board needs to look into. I think you need to be asking the judge and the courts, why is this amount of money going to this one person when there's county contracts in place? Historically, there's a set pay rate. It's negotiated. It's agreed upon. And everybody kind of knows what's going on. I think the other issue is the board needs to figure out why the courts will not give up the contracts for court-appointed attorneys, for G A Ls. They're being very opaque with it. And we have been trying for years to get these contracts. We can't get our hands on them. So maybe y'all can get them, and we can figure out what's going on here. So see you in a few minutes.
Jamie Murray?
Okay, I'm not sure where I left off, but I'm just going to finish. I think I got as far as TJ told us we should do our homework, to figure out who published it. And I think any reasonable person would believe that if your best buddy TJ knows who it was, that you know who published it. And maybe you'd like to share that with us here tonight. It's your misbehavior and your misdeeds that put you in the spotlight. You are so far out of your lane. I don't know if you are just that arrogant, or Gary Fletcher is led to believe that you are untouchable, and that you can do whatever you want to whomever you want, which is what you're doing. Thing is, most of us understand that the days of misbehavior, misdeeds being done in the dark are long gone. That party is over. We live in a world of cell phones, cameras, social media. We have a platform to expose it and hold you all accountable. Thank God, really, because I think we've had enough. Some of you have no problem with social media when you're using it to tell each other how wonderful you are. But that when your horrible behavior is in the spotlight, it's a problem. Crazy. Over the weekend, your family member, Jeff, insinuated that you are still engaged in your efforts to hurt my family. I hope that at some point, either this board, Gary Fletcher, whoever, or whoever has the power to put an end to your actions, does so. These efforts by you and other county officials are costing the taxpayers of St. Clair County a fortune. And Gary Fletcher is the biggest recipient of all that money. The people should be infuriated that our tax dollars are being spent to literally shut, we the people up, about what is really going on in our county. What is so horrifying is that there are children being harmed by either their actions, inactions, and/or their silence. Jeff, none of this you are doing is part of your duties as county commissioner. Maybe Mr. Fletcher can remind you what your role is and what integrity means, because it all seems lost on you at this point. I guess the unfortunate part of this, at this point with this issue, is that we're neighbors. And your ability, your inability to take it on the chin has hurt a lot of people. Thanks.
Moving on to new business, Sheriff's Office, Year End 2023 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program, Application Approval.
Make a motion to send it to full board.
Second.
Any questions on it? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to receiving file packets.
Make a motion to receive and file.
Support.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
At this time, I'd like to call the Board of Commissioners Environmental Public Works Committee meeting to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Samasco?
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin, Commissioner Beeden?
Present.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Present.
Commissioner Torello, or Commissioner Van den Bosch?
Here.
Commissioner Torello.
Here.
Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any citizens wishing to be heard in regards to the Environmental
Public Works Committee? Moving on to conceptual initiatives, are there-
I turned one about-
You did? I don't have it.
I turned four in.
Oh, I don't have it. I have none.
Go ahead.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
This time I want to talk about the ARPA fund. There's a lot of stuff going on in the news that the federal government is now discussing rescinding a lot of ARPA funds, or you know, it's a possibility because of, got it right there, all right. Yeah, they're talking about maybe possibly rescinding the ARPA funds because of the debt ceiling negotiations, all that stuff, whatever. I see that they came to an agreement today on that. So maybe that's done, and then maybe it's a dead issue. But I think it's time for this board to do something about the money that's out there that you so far seem to have earmarked for 26 Mile. I know I talked to Commissioner Baldwin a couple of weeks ago, and she said she wanted to wait till October or something to see what was going to happen. It's a long time from now. You know, that this money could go, it could help a lot of people. And I think most of the people here, most of the people out in the community, everyone's made it very clear that they don't want this money going to 26 Mile Road. And I would hate to see that, you know, we wait another three months, four months to take the vote and all that. And that's just more time that money's not being used for the community. And that money was meant for the community. It wasn't meant for Jeff and his pet projects, and Todd Chartier, and everyone that's going to benefit from it. It was meant to benefit everybody, not just a select few. And like I said, it would be a real shame if something happens and this county loses that ARPA money because it's being sit on, because you know, you guys won't make a decision on the 26 Mile Road project. There's a lot of small businesses in this community that, you know, were affected by the pandemic, that that's what that money was for. You know, I think it's time for you guys to make a decision on this. You know, shit or get off the pot. You've had your studies, you've had your town halls, you've had all these nice ladies here show up every two weeks to talk about it. A bunch of other people have come and talked about it. The constituents have made it very clear that they don't want this money going to 26 Mile Road. So I think it's time for y'all, there's nothing left to figure out. There's really nothing left to talk about. Make your decision. If you're going to approve it, approve it. If you're not going to approve it, don't approve it. But it's time to vote on it. We're not going to sit on this any longer. There's no reason for it. You know, and let's just put that money into the community. Let it help the people that really needs it. Because it's not well-spent going to 26 Mile Road. That's not only going to help a few people. Mostly Jeff and his buddies that are pushing for it. But yeah, you know, like I said, I may be wrong, and I may not have all the information about the government wanting to take this money back. But if that's still a possibility, that they could pull that money back from communities, y'all need to make a decision. Because like I said, it would be a disaster if our county loses that money, because Jeff has tied it up with this 26 Mile Road, and the board won't take their vote, and you guys won't make your decision. So I think y'all just need to do what you need to do. You need to sit down, have a talk, and let's just put this to vote, and let's put this issue to bed. Because, you know, the inaction is just becoming kind of tiresome. You know, I think you guys know what you need to do. So just do it.
If I could, that was for ARPA funds. We addressed it on her committee. We do have some more ARPA that will be addressed during the Ways and Means. So we'll be addressing it. So that was addressed on her committee.
Okay. See no conceptual initiatives or old business. We're going to move to new business, item seven A, the landfill, new electric service.
Make a motion to send it to full board.
Support.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven B, the landfill letter of credit increase.
Make a motion to send it to full board.
Support. Thank you. Any questions?
Just one. Maybe you got the answers for it. I was going to ask Carrie to give a rundown.
I was just going to say, this is a standard thing that they do on an annual basis, that the landfill has line of credit. But you can explain it better than I can.
So this is part of the landfill assurance we're required to do, where we have to maintain the landfill for a period of time after closure. The reason for the increase is due to what Mr. Williams and Mr. Donaldson presented at your last meeting, based on the legislative changes. There's changes to the formula on how they calculate those closure and post-closure costs. And the letter of credit goes against our fees that we have to have saved up for that closure, post-closure. So that is the reason for the increase.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven C, meet and hunt environmental assessment fees two for the airports.
Did I see Katie here?
Yeah.
Make a motion to send it to full board.
Katie, just want to give us a quick rundown?
Good evening, commissioners. So the second phase for the environmental assessment is to, for off-airport properties. So these are the private properties surrounding the airport and are in the approach into our main runway 422. With this, it is something we will work with meet and hunt with. We will send out letters to these property owners explaining the project. And then with permission, we will access the lands and have an evaluator out there to survey the lands, depending on the wetland delineation and the biologist's evaluation. So this is all for the obstruction removal, for the trees that are impeding in the approach.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Katie. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven D, broadband consultant recommendation.
Do you want to do some information before we get into it, or?
Jeff, yeah, what I did was this. I was, this proposal was something I suggested early on in February, March, January, February. When I was elected in November, one of the issues in my district was District One, Northwest part of the county, was obviously an underserved area, the broadband, the total lack of high-speed internet, and the effect it has on education and all the other things. The board, you know, Jeff Bohm was agreeable that, yeah, that's something we need to do. And we put that out for an R F P. I was on the committee for the R F P. There was myself, our administrator, Georgia Baldwin, Joy Torello, and our two people for planning, Mr. Struck and Mr. George. So we went through all that. We had nine applications. We had the first four, we interviewed. We went through that. And the bottom four, the lowest four, we also interviewed another one. And what I did was I put my, I was very clear at all times where I was going with this. It was my initiative. I had some contact with my district. There's some people working in my district. Was one of the bidders worked in my district, worked in Bill Dieter's district, township, for all the reasons. So what I did is, when I amended the bylaws, I had provisions, or asked to amend the bylaws, to basically, I did a memo to the board. Y'all got it. And it lays it out, it's four pages. I'll make some copies available. I'm just going to suffice to say, I really feel strongly that wideband group is the right choice. Any of those people could produce weight studies and things of those natures and do some of this stuff. I laid out my concerns for the urban group, as far as what I felt was irregularities with how that process came about, where they were actually interviewed, having been cut by the initial cut. Go look at all that. But the bottom line is, I really, since November, I put in a ton of time. And like Jeff says, can barely operate a cellphone sometimes. I didn't know anything about broadband, anything about I S Ps, anything about service, blended service, all these things, fiber, you know, wireless, all this stuff. I really got up to speed on it. And what I was really looking for in my district was verification. This Ardauf grant that went to Mercury, Mercury finally came in. I like Mercury. I've gotten to know the Scott, whatever his name is, the guy that came and talked. I've talked to him a few times. I think everyone's well-intentioned. But they have requirements under their federal grant on what they're supposed to deliver. That's stuff that can be tested. It's actually self-reported right now, which is a very bad way to do business. They can test it. Wideband does the testing. Wideband does their own data. Wideband is out. The guy from Wideband is out in our town, our county, on a regular basis. He's actually watching what some of these people are doing, because it's part of his industry. I had a disagreement or difference of opinion with our administrator of sorts on who to pick, and it came out for this urban group. That's okay. But I'm going to strongly advocate for the reasons in my memo. And I'll make some, some things available here, some copies available. I would just ask you to make that part of the record. When it comes to full board vote, if we're going to move this on, I would just ask that be moved on for final consideration, not for any particular adoption of the recommendations. I do want to make a case for respectfully rejecting the recommendation of staff and going with wideband. It may get legs, it may not. But I don't think this is the place for that. I've done the memo. You guys have had time. I got it out this afternoon after lunch. Maybe some haven't seen it. Jeff, you're just coming back from the conference in Mackinac. There's a lot of information there. Take a look at it and give me a chance to make a pitch for that. I'm doing this not because I have any connection with wideband. Never met the guy before. Probably never meet him again. But I like what he did. He's boots on the ground. I deal with experts on a regular basis for the last 40 years. Experts for court, experts for cases, investigators, reports. I've got a pretty good ability to sense experts. And this is the guy that will serve my district and the county the very best. You can believe it or not, in my opinion. But I feel strongly about that. And it's only a $20,000 difference from the revised bid, from the lowest bidder, and it's still number four out of nine. So he's still mid-range. It's not the $500,000 guy, the $250,000 guy. It's a $102,000 guy. And there were actually two above him. And this urban was second above him at 112, was one 109. I think we should go with wideband. That's my two cents worth. I would appreciate the board to seriously consider that. Call me, talk to me. We'll make a further record on it at full board. But if it gets moved on, at least move it on for final decision, to consider the recommendation of staff, but also other comments by commissioners on other options.
Can you take us through the process, Carrie, that you guys went through? Maybe, I know Dave and Jeff are here, too.
Sure. I mean, I do want to address the concern. There was no irregularities in how the bids were evaluated, how they were looked at. You know, staff did not do anything outside of policy in any, everything. And the evaluations were 100% in compliance with ARPA rules. So I do take extreme exception to the, to the memo indicating that you feel staff did this improperly and unfairly towards a vendor. Because this vendor was not, did not resubmit a bid. They were not able to provide any information afterward. They bid by component, which was part of the R F P process. And in reviewing the components and how they broke it out, we felt the first four components were applicable to what the county was looking for, which did put their bid at 61,875 versus the 102.
So why weren't they, why were they cut? Why didn't they make the first cut? What's that all about?
Well, initially, we did look at the full bids. But during the interviews, you expressed concern about the two vendors that were out of state. And we did have another in-state vendor, since you wanted them local. And one of the gentlemen from Urban Wireless is from Macomb, so that is very local. So that's why we felt if we looked at the components of their bid, that they could fall within that range.
Did anybody reach out to wideband to see if they would also engage in a discussion about reducing the bid? The answer's no.
We did ask during the interview process about different components and delivery timelines.
I was there-
And he indicated it was a flat fee.
I was there at that interview process. They were never allowed an opportunity. I called them after the meeting. They've, this other people came in and gave a reduced bid for whatever you want to call components. Are you able to have that same discussion? Absolutely.
Well, wideband had that opportunity because it was in the R F P document. They chose not to bid by component. And many of the vendors did bid by component, which was specifically spelled out in the R F P document. So nobody was giving any additional advantage, or got to do something that not every person had the opportunity to do.
And I may be wrong on that. That's just the appearance. You know, to me, it didn't pass the smell test. And I've been wrong before. And I appreciate your concern that it's a, you know, offense against your efforts there. But the bottom line is still, that I still believe that's the very best person for the job. That's all I can have to say.
My only comment I'll make to the board is, you know, certainly it's within your right to choose whatever vendor you would like. However, if we do choose this vendor based on the ARPA rules, the scoring, and how the scores came out, it would not be eligible to use ARPA funds. So you would have to fund it in a different manner.
But I would just say that I've looked at the ARPA funding rules myself as well. And broadband would bid it identically with the other ones, if that's what you wish. That was a conversation we had after the fact, that he would be willing to. He didn't like how he set it up, or offered payments broken out equally over the time period. You just write him a check, like you're going to do for everybody else, if that's what you want to do. But they would, it could be done. There may be technical reasons why, you know, you don't like this company or this particular bid. But to me, it was just being geared towards this one company that did make the initial cut, and now they got the bid. I'm sorry, just-
Correct me if I'm wrong. Everybody chose the- Correct me if I'm wrong, everybody chose the recommended vendor besides Steve?
That is correct.
I have many questions myself. Out of the initial, and of course, Steve got this whole issue started because he's concerned about broadband, and it does fall within the ARPA. If wideband potentially, if they're going to be under consideration, can get the concerns to where they would be in compliance with ARPA funds, I believe they should be given that opportunity. Was urban rejected initially out of the initial submissions? Were they initially rejected as one of, that was not going to be considered?
We chose to look at initially, for the first round of interviews, the total bid amount, and just picked the four lowest bids, because.
And they were kicked out. Urban was kicked out.
For ARPA, you have to choose the lowest bidder qualified to do the work with all considerations, which is why I feel if we don't go with the lower bidder, that we will be violating the ARPA rules.
Well, I'm going to disagree with that also, because another issue that we have done in the county is, we don't always take the lowest bidder.
This is federal funds involved.
She didn't answer your question. Your question was, were they cut? The answer's clearly yes, she won't admit it.
Well, no, they weren't cut. They, we were chose to not interview them during round one.
Okay, they were chosen not to be interviewed.
They were 100% qualified. You, Commissioner Samasco, very specifically indicated you did not like the other two firms because they were in a different state.
My preference was for local.
This firm was local. Actually, they're more local than wideband, and I have no issues with wideband, but their cost is $40,000 above this bid, and this firm is qualified to do the work.
Urban has two openings. They're going to bid, they're going to have RFPs for data collection and community surveys. Wideband does it themselves, and they bring data that's already existing in this county. You just an open-ended contract. You want the lowest bid, but you give them a wide open for another 10, 20, 30,000. You don't even know what it is.
It's, there is no open-ended contract. Any additional work that may be needed, both, all vendors indicated, so they would look at existing data and if there's other data needed, and I think Dave can speak to this a little better.
But we would get that with wideband. It's included, it's inclusive, it's part of the package. We don't have to do RFPs, we don't have to consider other.
Commissioner, I'm going to respectfully disagree with you on this. The board is welcome to choose whoever you want, but you will not be in compliance with federal guidelines for spending funds if we take the highest of the bids that we looked at. And to answer your question, Commissioner Rushing, we are not required to take the lowest bid. However, in those cases, this is federal funds, and there are very specific rules. And I do not want this as an exception on our single audit that gets sent to the federal government, and we have to write a corrective action plan, and I have no corrective action plan, because I know doing it is incorrect.
Let me ask the administrator.
Well, let me finish, Steve, because I had the four, so let me finish my questions first. So urban was rejected the first time. Were they the only ones that were given additional consideration to re-submit a pricing for a contract?
They did not resubmit. They broke down their pricing by component in their initial bid. Nobody is allowed to resubmit.
Okay, so we reject.
And many of the vendors did choose to break it down.
So we rejected them?
We did not reject them. We did not interview them in the first round. That is much different than rejecting their bid.
How'd they get to the second round? Because the first round, they were one of the higher bidders.
Commissioner Samasco wanted a local firm. We indicated there was another Michigan-based firm that did their bid piece, or by component, which is what we asked for in the bid, and when we looked at the components, they did fall within that. That's why they were selected.
That was our administrator's suggestion, and I agreed to that. Go ahead, interview someone else, that's fine. But, you know, I did not ask that these people get a second.
If I can just add, there were never any rejection letters sent out to any firm.
Dave, were you contacted by someone from urban, or did you contact urban?
We've been contacted by many firms throughout this process.
My question was urban. Were you contacted?
Yes.
Yes. And that was after the initial four that we decided?
They asked about the status of our selection process, and I told them, this is before we contacted them to interview them, they asked about the status of our process. I simply responded that we were interviewing the bottom four bidders. That was the county response. They followed up, wondering who those four were. They were sent the bid tab sheet, which was also posted on Mitten, that's publicly posted. They followed up again, wondering why they wouldn't be considered in the, that group, and planning did not respond to that. The only time we followed up with them was after the committee, after that fourth interview, decided to bring them in for an interview. That was about a week and a half later.
And they were included by reason of their contact with planning?
No, they were included because they broke down their cost per component as the RFP required. Item number 12 of the requirements for the proposals asked for them to break down their total cost and their cost by component. Not every firm did that, and that's why we started with the lump sum proposals to start with, because, as you know, a lot of those scopes of work were varied, and, you know, it's tough to make do when one firm did do it by component and one did not.
Is the product that's going to be provided by urban or wideband the identical product?
So at the end of the day, when you look at these different proposals, it's kind of what I just alluded to. I mean, they all provided a scope of work, and all of these scopes of work include some sort of data collect, you know, data analysis. That's going to be the biggest key for us. There's already a lot of data out there that exists right now in various forms.
If I could, Mr. Dieter from Grant Township, who is the president for the entire state of Michigan, for the Michigan Township Association, he's worked with this, and we received a letter of his support for, and I keep getting the wrong word for, their company.
Wideband.
Wideband. And I thought that should carry a lot of weight, because he's already doing work within the county. The information that wideband already has within the county, broadband or urban does not have that information. How would they get that information if they don't work with wideband?
So, you're asking how would the county get information if we don't work with one particular firm?
Well, wideband already has information, because he's been working with Grant Township, and one of the townships he's going to be working with is Wales, and if it expands, it's going to include all six of my townships. But he's already working with numerous townships, wideband in. Why wouldn't we take somebody already working within the county, or at least have consideration? And also with Bill Dieter's recommendation as the president for ETA, that should carry some consideration also.
Sure. And laid out in the memo, I mean, we went based on the proposed scope of work. You know, there was the discussion that Commissioner Samasco brought up about the RFP. That's a scenario that's if needed. None of those other firms provided any information in terms of a survey.
I'm glad you said that. If needed, if we determine at the county that additional information is needed, they're going to charge extra for it, correct?
Well, I think any firm, any firm that didn't include in their scope of work.
Wideband included it, and they were already one of the lowest out of the four. They were considered for the final consideration, and they're giving us the whole package with the information with no additional cost. Potentially, we're given an open-ended contract for information. If we need more, they could actually exceed wideband's contract.
Well, just to clarify, wideband group's scope of work did not mention data collection or a community survey. They mentioned data visualization through GIS mapping. So, like I said, each firm kind of varied in terms of their scope of work. We tried to do the best sort of apples-to-apples comparison, and based on the per-component breakdown, that's why the recommendation.
Well, you work with Reeser, the county does, and also with Duke down in Marysville, and wideband already has a relationship with them. We're potentially going to consider a urban wireless that does not have a relationship with providers already in the county.
I'll just say to that, that there's multiple internet service providers in the county, and pretty much every one of the firms we interviewed has some sort of relationship with those firms. So clearly, there's other players out there besides Duke, besides Verizon, Comcast, and so forth. So we're going to need somebody that can engage all of those.
Does Reeser supply the county?
Do they supply the county?
With fiber optics.
They have their own fiber network. I'm not sure exactly what's tied into it or not, if.
And they also go out to Yale School District and various school districts, correct? So, Ray signs, or wideband has a relationship with them already. Somebody that's already working with them. We're going to have urban come in, an open-ended contract potentially if we need additional information.
Additional information to the data.
If we need more, yeah, for the data, you said they're going to charge it anyways, and wideband includes that. Now, I understand your definition, but if we were to potentially have wideband as consideration, we could put that stipulation into it, if they're going to be considered, that this is what's going to happen. If the county commissioners want to deem that wideband would be the service that we want to have with this. None of this would have happened if Steve Samasco didn't do the initial work in November. We wouldn't even be considering somebody to manage and gather this information. This conversation wouldn't be here. Now you have somebody that's done hundreds of hours of work on this issue. He's the expert in the room as far as county commissioners. I value his opinion very well, as whoever we have on our search, our committee boards and also our chair, when you're in charge of something, I trust the other commissioners to do their work. And if I have a question with them, I call every commissioner up if I do have a question to get that. So, but I trust them to do their work. I trust Steve and all the information he got here. I'd hate to lose his input and take a hands-off approach, because now we're taking somebody that is not going to give us the information that we potentially require without additional funds.
I think the committee, based on their voting, they assessed the proposal and the interview, and felt that we would get the deliverables that we were intending to get out of this engagement. So that was our recommendation. Certainly, the board can.
Well, I do have, just, I'll finish on this, same concerns I already have, is that apparently somebody was given additional consideration after the fact they were dropped. You're saying that they weren't, they met the components, but then they, you take, picked out of the components, okay, now what is your cost? Did they have that $60,000-plus cost in their components prior to?
Yes, they broke down every component of their scope of work by a cost breakdown.
All right, Steve Samasco asked you a specific question. Did anybody reach out from them to you? I'm asking, did anybody from Planning Commission reach out to them?
No, we did not. We responded to their email that asked about the status of the process.
Okay. Why wouldn't we give that same consideration to anybody else?
No other firm asked us about that specific question.
Well, if we're going to arbitrarily, and I have a concern with other contractors that the county can potentially hire, if they're going to come across with an email just because it's Company A or B, C, D, everybody that puts a proposal in, they should be given the same consideration. Otherwise, you can just file the email and saying, no, we're going to give everybody the same consideration. Otherwise, I don't see where we're playing on an even playing field for all the companies that we consider.
So as I mentioned, we've been contacted, both Planning as well as the Purchasing Department. They've been contacted by other firms that bid on this process.
Right.
At varying points in time.
Right.
So, we've gotten contacted by firms before we ever decided who was going to get interviewed. We even got contacted by firms yesterday with emails inquiring as to what the process was in, you know, the status report.
Were they given any additional consideration after the fact?
Was who? Any firm? No firm was.
Oh, I'm reading this, but.
No firm was given any additional consideration after the fact. Every proposal, all nine proposals that the county received.
If not through the email, would they have been given any consideration to have resubmit their pricing to the county?
Absolutely. We had a discussion at the committee level.
You said earlier that the other didn't, because they didn't send an email. They were given consideration, because they're checking.
You asked if other bidders had emailed about the status.
Right, they had not.
And we would give them an answer as to where we were in the process.
But whether it's Company A, B, C, D, or whatever we're looking at, if one company is given consideration because they sent an email, I think it should be a policy that everybody gives them that same consideration, because now we break down the initial proposal, they were rejected.
There was no rejection, and the RFP required a cost proponent breakdown. As I said, not every firm provided that.
And without that email, they wouldn't have been in the final four.
They weren't in the final four to begin with.
But then after the email, they were.
We had a discussion with the committee after the final interviews.
That is true, Dave. The committee discussed, there is other local bidder, urban, that could be interviewed, and I was agreeable to that. Yes, go ahead and interview them. You know, so that's okay to interview. The more the merrier, in a sense. So, but I pointed out what I thought were irregularities, you know, and we can disagree from a professional standpoint. Then I had one follow-up question for Carrie.
I'm off. I think I'm pretty off, sir.
Carrie, a question. You know, I'm not an accountant, I'm not a controller, and you are, you've done this job a very long time, you've done a very good job at it. When I looked at all the bids, nine bids came in from a range of 72,000 to 500,000, 250, and then below all that. And so when your concern is, well, we have to take, quote, the lowest bidder, you know, we have to take the lowest reasonable bidder that can do the service we want, the deliverables that the county wanted, the master plan update and the equity, digital equity stuff, that's not what I wanted for my district as a deliverable. You guys want that. What I was focusing on is the things that I mentioned in my document, that, you know, the boot stuff. But on this issue of creating an ARPA violation, the lowest bidder, they're mid-range, they were below 50%, they weren't the 500,000, they weren't the 250,000, they weren't even the 112 or the 109. They were the 102, and then a couple below that. So I felt, why wouldn't that qualify for ARPA? You have to take the absolute lowest, that's it?
For federal funds, you have to take the lowest responsive bidder that is able to do the job with other factors considered. So after we went through the review process, if five, or if the majority of the committee did select this bid at 61, which is only about $2,000 or $3,000 more than Geotech at the 59, you know, we, that is something I feel that's very defensible in the documentation, but to go $40,000 more, when the majority of the committee did feel that this company has the ability to do the work and the deliverables, and after their interview and understanding even more fully how they broke down the components, that we felt components one through four would really meet the scope of what was in the RFP, and the fifth component was a lot of stuff that we really didn't feel like we needed when reviewed, after the interview, which is why so. And I really want to address Commissioner Rushing's concern, when you keep saying they're rejected or they were giving additional consideration, there was no resubmital. They bid it exactly the way we asked them to. They broke down the cost by component. You know, as Mr. Struck said, not every vendor did. It was lump sum. So it did make it difficult. Those that broke it down, we could pick and choose and say, you know, component six has broken down, you know, that's not really what we're looking for. But we have to look at the deliverables that we asked for as written in the RFP, so if you want something different that's not in the RFP, then that's not fair to the other vendors, because they didn't know that.
So I get used to, it's the first committee I ever served on for a selection. So if wideband were to be allowed to, say, carve something out, that would be a violation, because that would be a revision.
Yes, they.
Because they didn't make a component bid.
They had the ability to bid it by, we actually asked them to bid it by component, and they bid a flat fee per month, and they're not the only one that did that or that bid just a flat amount, so it was difficult to break it down. So, you know.
To sum that up, I think the difference we have is, you feel that urban group can provide the deliverables equal to or the same as what wideband does, and I really strongly disagree with that. I think we get a much better service out of wideband. So, based on all that, I'll let that go. I would just like to make my memo part of the record pursuant to our bylaws. I'll do the same thing at full board, maybe make some more commentary if people have questions. I would like an opportunity to convince as many of the commissioners as possible to select wideband. I've done a lot of work on it. I'm not going to call people and press it. I'm going to say, if people have questions, call me. Make your own decision on it. I've given you my information, and I'm just going to leave it at that. Thank you. And I didn't mean to offend the administration by, you know, suggesting...
I just wanted to make the record very clear that there was no unethical practices in this bidding that happened at all, and, and I don't, it's fine that we disagree on, on the selection, but...
I tried to call, I called the regulatory, I didn't want us to call, I just...
So are we able to make a motion to send this onto full board? And then we can determine which vendor we would pick at that time?
That's what I'd like to do, Jeff, just send it to full board.
Okay.
We'll have more discussion, people can look at it, and...
Yeah, I'll give you two weeks to do some more homework on it.
I do appreciate it, I do, thank you.
I could, as long as we're discussing it, the motion, I could make the motion just for a broadband consultant, not with the recommendation, and we can consider that and talk about it at our full board meeting. Because we do need a broadband consultant. I can't support the recommendation that was given. So if it's okay, I'll make a motion to forward to the full board a broadband consultant.
Second.
Any questions?
We're done.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thanks.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 7E, amended brownfield redevelopment grant application approval request, the EDA Business Center.
But make the motion.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 7F, the North Channel County Park Grant Opportunity, the Spark Grant Program.
Make a motion, send it to the full board.
Support?
Not, not that this is related to this, but the, Commissioner Vandembosch, you guys are all set on that monies for the 393 or whatever, for the Marine City? You know, the grant, the grant from the, okay.
Yes.
And then I think there's, is there another couple hundred thousand coming for bike trails or something, two down there?
Potentially.
Potentially, okay.
Time for discussion.
Time for discussion.
I do have a concern, and I know it's only $25,000 match on this, and I looked at the swing set, and if I'm incorrect on what I'm looking at, it's wheelchair accessible, either one or two wheelchairs. The cost of this swing is $225,000. That's a lot of taxpayers' dollars, even though we're only using 25,000 of ours and the rest is coming from a grant, I believe that's the case. That's an awful lot of money for a swing.
Was this passed by the prior board, is that where that came from? What, what's the history on that, Jeff, do you know?
Now, the Spark Grants just came up, there was a pile of money, a lot of applications to it.
They never, I've been on the park committee January, February, March, it's never been discussed at the park, it must have been discussed previously, maybe...
The Spark Grant came out like two weeks ago.
Okay, so the grant came out two weeks ago, so we haven't had a meeting, so that'll be on the, is that something we have to do tonight, or can we wait and talk about it at park and get some more information?
It has a deadline.
Pardon me?
It has a deadline for submittal.
When's the deadline?
I don't know off the top of my head, I'm not working on it, but...
Are we up against the deadline, do you believe, or you can't tell?
It's, no, Dennis, there was going to be a public hearing at full board, at the full board meeting regarding it.
Okay, so this is just pass it on to full board, and actually, we'll have a park meeting the day before the full board?
Yes.
Is that going, do you know that's going to be on the park agenda? Can we do something to make sure that gets on the park agenda?
Um, yeah, I'll email Dennis and I know.
Perfect.
I think too, Dave, when you talk about these, a lot of times it's the site prep, it's everything that else goes into it, so if you're just saying it's just a quote-unquote swing set, I, I know school playground equipment, I about fell over when we...
I'll get some more information from park, I'll find out from Dennis. I'll find out from Dennis Delore what's, what's going on with that and report back before the full board.
Yeah, I realize that it's real expensive for this stuff, because when I was township supervisor, we put a new park with swing sets and slides and everything, and it's very expensive. You can't just use regular mulch, it has to be decontaminated, rubber-bound, decontaminated, and you got to have it continuously inspected. And we had, one of the ladders was a quarter inch off, and it was deemed that a child could get their foot through a little, so we had to shut the park down until we had professionals come in and fix the step. So I know the stuff's real expensive, and I'm not against a handicap swing, but $225,000 of taxpayers' money, and that's what we're supposed to be doing, is watching dollars. That's my concern. If you can get more answers between now and then, because Dennis must have known about this, the applicant information, his name is on it, maybe you can give him a call ahead of time, and...
Chris is going to do a memo to Dennis Delore and have it on the park agenda, I'll go to that meeting, which is the night before the board meeting, and then report for the board at that time.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
We have a motion, one, two. Questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, or item eight...
Make a motion to receive and file.
The activity report?
Smith, yeah, Smith Creek landfill activity.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Other environmental public works matters this evening? Seeing none, item 10, information only, the monthly...
Make a motion, receive and file.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Have receive and file packet?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Adjournment. We're so moved.
Did anybody make a motion?
I don't know. I, I made the motion to adjourn.
I can't make everyone's.
I made it.
Second.
Motion adjourned. Or meeting adjourned.
This time, I'd like to call the Ways and Means Committee to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Semasko.
Present.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Commissioner Beeden.
Present.
Commissioner Bone.
Here.
Commissioner Torello.
Here.
Commissioner Vandembosch.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here. All right, can I have a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. This time, citizens to be heard. Start Linda Swyhofford.
Thank you once again for entertaining my comments. It is the distribution of the ARPA funds, you know, the clock is ticking. I, I'm not, I guess I just heard tonight, maybe the clawback isn't going to be as pressing, but we do know that, you know, those dollars are out there, and they're just kind of sitting there, and the longer they sit, it's kind of like, you know, things get, go bad after a while if they sit too long. You know, I served on a board for 28 years, I know it takes some time to get people to come along. We had seven board members, you're dealing with a number of people here, but I never saw anything take this long. So, you know, I would just encourage everybody to go ahead, I think you pretty much now have decided that we're done, don't need to get all those dollars going to 26 Mile. I think the county, through Carrie and her list, the wish list, I think, you know, there are a number of items that can be taken care of. The, the rest of the money could be distributed to the townships, through the districts, and trust me, they wouldn't take that long to figure out what they were going to do with the money and get it spent because they're just more expeditious at getting things done. So, I would encourage you, you know, not to keep sitting on your hands, but just get it done, just do it. And I, that's all I have to say. I do believe that there was a plan in place or presented to this board, God, I think it's going to be a year in August, by Commissioner Semasko. I don't know what you did with it, did you read it? Did it make, make any sense to any of you, or did you just kind of blow it off? I think, you know, again, if someone presented you with a plan and you, you couldn't, I mean, it's been a long time, so I don't get it. Just get it done. I, I think that you owe that to the citizens of the county to move, and I thank you.
Libby Pro.
Okay, so, the MADC is using local EDAs throughout the state to pursue and advertise land options before changes in zoning have been presented to the public. In Marshall, Michigan's case, options on land transfers were developed as long as three years prior to any requests for change in zoning. If it's good for the community, there is no need to keep it clandestine, as was done in Marshall, Big Rapids, and actually, what appears like might have been going on in Chinatown ship. EDAs also handpick and support political candidates who will carry the poisonous water in some cases. The chairman of our Board of Commissioners is also the vice president of our local EDA, and it is a conflict of interest. We don't really know with confidence who you are representing when you meet with lobbyists. Who are you serving? Because you're split between serving two masters here. Dan Casey said in a recent interview, "We want to keep what we already have," and I actually had to chuckle at that. And he said that the EDA is working to identify what will attract workers to St. Clair County. Well, all of us here, we are the county. We know what attracts people here. We know what makes our county unique. Our goal should be to make St. Clair County a tourist Mecca, much like Traverse City, but the EDA wants to turn our area into Flint. This isn't progress, in fact, it's regressive. If it crowds low-paid workers into cheap housing and polluted congested areas, that's not progress. Too often, claims of higher salaries are misleading because it's padded with the higher salaries of engineers and supervisors that are lumped into that, but the guy working on the line isn't making what you claim. If you want public buy-in to these projects, publish the salary guidepost, publish the business plan, include staffing projections and expected downsizing due to potential automation. Yes, our young people need jobs, and the county should bring those jobs to the right locations, which doesn't overlook the potential market for growing families and older populations that seek space. Green space, luxury living, leisure living, dining, arts, entertainment, eclectic shopping, and superior services. We have space to accommodate both cultures. Let's recycle the blight and focus on working with community zoning rather than undermining it. Keep industry in existing zones and corridors to protect the green space. Have your EDA associates invested in community stewardship. Let's put some money into, let's see them, put some money into education parks, health and social programs, and fund affordable childcare to support working families. Build the parks, sponsor athletics and athletic fields, provide resources for shelters, invest in substance treatment programs, fund school health clinics.
Okay, Libby, you're going to have to wrap it up, please.
Feed the hungry in our community by funding or seeking funding for food pantries. Food insecurity is a real issue.
Please wrap, please wrap it up.
Okay. If you do this, people will come. Right now, we're focused on the wrong thing.
I'm going to have to stop you, Libby, okay?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Ah, Kevin.
So I just had a very, I just had a very interesting conversation with this guy right here. He's here tonight, you guys are talking about there's a loan you guys gave Eddie Development. That's public money, correct? Can somebody respond? It's public money that you gave him, right? So I don't know what you're talking about, that it's not the public's concern about that money, and that it was private money from the EDA. It's public money, you clown. Here's the issue. Jeff is the commission, he's the chair of the board, of the commission. He's on the executive board of the EDA. He's the head of the land bank. He's also a tenant at his building with his gym and his bar, but now this guy just said that the bar is his, it's not Jeff's. What I don't understand, and, and maybe, you know, I'm just, I mean, I'm one of those uneducated idiots that Jeff talked about at the last town hall meeting, but this seems like a major conflict of interest and a huge ethical violation, that the chair of the commission, that executive board member of the EDA, the head of the land bank, is somehow spearheading the deal with this dude, and he has his business inside that building, and yet he's getting loans of public money. I mean, can somebody, you're an attorney, Mr. Semasko, maybe you can, you know, break this down, I'll email you about it.
Schedule an appointment, come on in.
Yeah, and maybe you can explain to me, because, I mean, it just seems to me that there's a huge conflict of interest that Jeff is in that building with his private businesses when there's a bunch of public money going to that building. Why you couldn't answer, why the YMCA, because I read the newspaper article today, and they said, how long is the YMCA getting free rent? Part of the deal was YMCA got a bunch of free rent.
Correct the board, please.
Got a bunch of free rent. And he said in his, his response, that he doesn't remember exactly how much free rent, how long that was going to ask for. And then I just asked him if he remembered at this point, and he told me, it's none of my business, and it's none of my concern. I, I think you're a little confused about public money and public concern, and when you're a private business who comes to the public asking for our tax dollars, we have some concerns, and we just have questions. So I'm going to take you up on that, Mr. Semasko, and, and hopefully you can break this down to me. If any of the other commissioners, I will email all of you too, and I just want an explanation how this is going on, that you have a, the head of your commission has a private business and a private bar in this dude's building, yet somehow they're getting public money. I mean, is Jeff going to vote on this? Does Jeff get a vote in this? Because it seems like a, a clear conflict of interest that he could have any say in this, let alone the fact that he spearheaded the whole deal. How does he get to run the whole deal for these schools and then move his own business in there? Is he paying rent? Is he paying the same everybody else is paying for the gym? Is he paying rent for his bar in there? I mean, there are so many questions the public has about this, and I think this commission should have some questions. I'm assuming he's about to talk after me and explain some things, but I mean, we're talking about a lot of money, $250,000. They got some pretty low interest rate on that, it's about to go up from 3% to 5% because they can't pay the money back. Apparently, they were dependent on the YMCA, and now the Y is not opening in time, but yeah, there needs to be some answers to this, and maybe somebody needs to explain to him exactly what goes on when you take public money. You have to talk to the public. I'll see you all again in two weeks.
Okay, we have no other speakers, but I'd like to ask our, if this is the proper time to do it, our county administrator, in regards to the ARPA funds, could we potentially put this on the Ways and Means Committee, what we're going to do with the balance of the funds for next month? Because I don't want this to drag out six to eight months. Whatever we're going to do with it, but we should be doing something with it.
You want a discussion item, Dave? What are you asking?
Yeah, I'll put it on the committee so we can discuss it next month, in Ways and Means, and then potentially, we can have a vote and the full board.
You want it on the July Ways and Means Committee agenda?
Correct. If I could, please.
Yep, if, if there's any specific information you would like me to provide prior to that, please let me know.
Yep, okay.
I would note, I had a discussion with Carrie about our capital improvement plan and the list, some of the monies we allocated, and if we needed to do something in a hurry because of this clawback issue, is there any, any changes to that? I think you said, no, that's pretty much, pretty much where it's at, the one you already have, right?
That, that is correct. You know, the undersheriff did speak a few weeks ago on some projects that have come up since then that aren't on the list, that, you know, we haven't evaluated for the categories yet, so I, I do know there's other projects that could come up. I don't see a fear in not being able to spend the funds, it's just a matter of how the board would like to spend the money.
Is that what you're asking for, Dave, to see what's on that list?
And then, whatever we're going to do with those monies, so a little part of discussion, whether we send an actual proposal to the full board, but have the discussion made to where there's going to be a deadline where we're going to make a discussion with the balance of the funds, because 2024 is going to get here pretty quick. I've been here since 2010, and that, today got here pretty quick.
I did reach out to Jeff, Linda Swyhofford called me, Swyhofford called me about this clawback issue, and I'd actually looked at it a couple months ago, and I know Jeff had contacts more with some of the federal people, and I said, you know anything about it? He said he'd make some phone calls and some contacts, I'll let Jeff address it, but...
Well, I've called all my township supervisors.
I'm talking federal contacts on what's going to be clawed back, and I'm under the understanding, and I shared it with Linda here when she came to the meeting today, that it, what they're clawing back is money unallocated by the feds, not money unallocated by the county.
That is correct. I spoke with Congresswoman Lisa McLean today, then I still spoke with Kevin Harrett from Gary Peters office, and it's not signed yet, you know, I mean, it's right there, but what they were saying...
The federal deal, the presidential act, or whatever.
It's the federal piece, and I think Georgia, she sent an article over to that explained that, so if you have, the county monies not going back. Well, I'll, I'll mention four of the supervisors, and Liz Masters is here, her and I have talked on this, and she does have use for this money for approved ARPA uses. Same thing with Al Titus, he's having his attorney look at it, township attorney, I've talked with Bruce Christie, the Columbus supervisor, him included. They have the issues, and I could read off what I got, because I got a bunch of the paperwork that I printed off of what the accepted uses are, and I believe it's the same list that would be accepted by our corporate council. So I'd like to get those funds allocated wherever they're gonna go, and if we're gonna make a decision as a board that all 16.3 million will be put on capital improvement projects, that's what the commissioners get to decide, whatever those things are. But I want that decision made sooner than later. Potentially, the six townships and half the city of Memphis potentially could get some funds, I want those funds so that they can understand that they're gonna get a piece of the pie and be able to use some of the monies for their concerns, because everybody has different concerns.
One of the things I reached out to Carrie on when this, because I read some of the stuff everybody else does, is the, you know, since they're talking about Kevin McCarthy talking to the president about this and that and the clawback of ARPA, I called Carrie and says, hey, if we needed to, if we need to allocate this, like, tonight, you know, could we do it? And she said, technically, we could, because we have approved things on our list, so that's what I was asking about. But then with Jeff's follow-up on some of that, you know, we do need to have that discussion on what's gonna go to townships, if any, I know some people think that, you know, that county money should be spent on the county, other ones to the township. We've talked about that, and I would like, I think we all wanna kind of get that moving.
I want each one of us to be held accountable for where we stand on this, and let's get the money spent, wherever it's gonna go, let's make a decision as, because that's our job as county commissioners, let's get this taken care of.
So, so when you say to get it spent, so it's no big secret, we're looking to do something with our health department building, right? We don't know what we're doing with our health department building yet, and we don't know what the cost is even gonna comment on that, right? So you wanna spend the money, so we go spend the money, then, oh man, we're $6 million short, because we needed that much money to do it.
See, what I would say on that point, too, for Jeff, you know, this deal with moving the, the health department into the county space, I thought that was an incredible opportunity for us, and it looks like that's going forward, because they missed a deadline, and we can now do that. I was real big on getting that under one roof for maintenance reasons and spacing and all this other stuff. So yeah, I think that is a very valid point. I think Dave's point is valid also, but we may need to look at that, because I think that health department issue, I was on here 15 years ago, the day I got on this board, that was a problem.
We're gonna have that expense regardless, so we do need to have the health department taken care of. That discussion and decision has to be made, and the longer we take, the more it's gonna cost. I'm gonna say that if we had to build them a new building, it'll probably push 50 million for, maybe that's a little high, but a $50 million building, for them to have the type of facilities they need.
They're talking, Dave, they're talking about moving it in, right?
I know, and then there's no cost, other than moving.
Right, right.
We gotta look at all the alternatives, Carrie's working on some alternatives right now, so.
I want decisions made. Okay, well, that's all I got on that. We have no updates. Conceptual initiatives, Commissioner Samasko's proposed resolution, funding of companies owned by interests hostile to state and national interest. If you would, I don't think we need a motion or anything, but go ahead, Steve.
It was a slow day at the office last week. I'm a purveyor of a lot of obscure information, and I was looking at a comment on the congressional record made by our congressional representative, Lisa McLean. I've never met Lisa McLean, I've never, I just, I supported Shane Hernandez when that spot came up a long time ago. Lisa got it, I just haven't never meet her, don't know a lot about her, but I came across the commentary, and I included on the resolution, and I really thought it was important in light of what some of the community fervor has been last year and again this year with battery plants and the thing that happened in Big Rapids, and I really feel strongly in agreement with what, with Ms. McLean, Ms. McLean said there. So the reason I did resolutions, I'm, I think I'm turning into Howard Hydeman. Because back, back in the day, Howard had every resolution you could think of, it drove people crazy, right? Me included. Well, so here I've got this resolution, but the reason I do it is to, to show the public, because fear, fear itself is bad, and people have these fears that are just unfounded. Now, if there's something going on that we don't know about, that's fine, maybe we'll have that as part of this discussion, but to me, we don't wanna support countries, entities that are owned by countries that are hostile to the United States, like China. And I misspelled Chinese in my heading, I'll put a Z instead of an S. But my point was, I'd like to tell Ms. McLean thank you for what she did, and this other representative, James, John James, Farmington, you know, maybe send it to him, say, hey, we appreciate that. I'm gonna, I'm gonna send it to my township officials, and say, look, this is not gonna, something we, I would support, or the board wants to support in my district or anyone else's district. I think it would allay some of the fears, we were getting letters from all around the state about battery plants and...
I think we could reach out to McLean's office and see what their, I guess, take on it, I mean, she, she made a statement, but is it for specific companies, is there...
Well, this just, this is, this is basically, I'm gonna read what she said, it's very short. All she said in her commentary is, Ms. McLean, Mr. Speaker, I stand here today in strong opposition to the Chinese Communist Party's takeover of a town in my home state of Michigan. The CCP is using one of their state-controlled companies to implant thousands of Chinese workers, billions worth of Chinese proprietary technology just outside of Big Rapids, companies called Goshen. Their technology is EV batteries. Now, Goshen likes to say this is a good thing for Michigan, maybe a good thing for America. Why? It's because they claim it brings jobs and money to the economy, but let's not forget, 500 million worth of taxpayer dollars will be used to subsidize and build that facility. This is quite frankly what I call BS. I like the way she talks, right? Goshen is bought and paid for by the CCP, and let's be clear, the CCP is not our friend. Also, I agree with that. So I'm not standing here and going to let us happen, I'm going to stand with the people of the great state of Michigan to call this out and continue to bring attention to this and do something about it, that's why I'm here today. I just think, you know, resolutions are meant for a purpose, there's administrative resolutions, this is more of a social resolution, it's, it's something I think's important to say as a board, unless there's, unless there's something I don't know that's coming, you know, I don't think there is, I think we should do that, it's gonna help people be more comfortable with the people that represent them, I think it's the right thing to do, and that's why I threw it out there, and I'd like to move it on to full board for consideration and passage, and then we'll distribute it however we wanna distribute it. So I'd make that motion at this time, if, and if there's some, if there's no second, it can pass, but...
Well, if we have a little more discussion, because definitely, I agree with it, and I think who we represent, each one of our districts, they need to know where we stand. There's a great concern that a potential battery plant could come into St. Clair County, and if that's a Chinese company, and you've seen the actual company documentation that tells the employee they have to swear allegiance to China, and that's part of what I think Lisa McLean's concern is. And I got the same concern with the battery plant potentially coming to St. Clair County and all the safeguards that, whatever township it would go into, and, but I like it, and if anybody else has anything else to say, but if you wanna make a motion, send it.
It could be subject to revision, if people wanna talk about it and revise, you think it's too strong, or that doesn't say enough, you know, by all means, chime in, but I'd like to do something along those lines, at least consider it at full board, and if we don't, we can't amend it at full board to make people like it, or something, it can fail, but I just thought it's something we could look at.
You wanna make the motion?
I did, and you made a second.
Okay, I'll second it. Any further discussion? All in favor?
I, I do have some...
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So I can't support it how it's written today, so I would appreciate the, the two weeks and a conversation.
Yeah, I would, I would withdraw, I would, Dave, just withdraw your second.
Well, you can rewrite the resolution with her concerns, and then if there's more concerns at the full board, we can change wording there also. But I like to have things taken care of. If the wording in there, you don't support the wording in there, have a conversation with Steve and saying, this is your concerns, he can draft...
I understand that.
Okay, right, I'm just, we're on public record, they need to know what we're talking about.
Not even just a conversation with Steve, you know, I put in there that we appreciate the Chinese cultures of people, but not the Communist Party, that kind of thing, it's, there's, there's interesting language there, and I would like people to look at.
Yeah, I think a discussion would be beneficial.
So what would you like to see happen, Lisa, how would you like to handle that?
I, I think we just need to be, so I, I don't, so I wanna be clear, I don't disagree, I don't support the Chinese Communist Party. Let's, let's be clear. But ultimately, it's the townships and the other municipalities that would have the ultimate say in who comes into their community, right? Like, we don't sit up here and make decisions about this company...
Except sometimes it's county funding, I'm just talking, just doing what the county does, to fund or promote it.
But, but I think if, if we're gonna make a blatant statement, then we really need to be cautious about that, we all, we have other international companies in our, in our county already, and, and those are friendly and have been, and...
You know, Dave, what I, what I would do is, is if you withdraw your second, I withdraw the motion table till next month, for committee discussion next month. It's, it can wait, it's not, it's not the end of the world.
Thirty, thirty days isn't gonna kill us, we can get some more information.
Look, folks, look, listen, listen, you need, people, people need to be able, people need to look at this, we all need to look at this, and either, you know, support it or not, doesn't have to happen, this thing just came up, it's not like it's something we talked about before, and I take my time, when I look at stuff, I take a lot of time, I'm not that quick. You know, I look at stuff, and look at it, and look at it two or three times, let's look at it, I'm glad you're gonna look at it, I really appreciate it.
I wanna closer look at it, and I, I respect that, the same respect that was given to Joy, asking for more time on an issue that she was concerned about, would also be granted.
And that worked out, just, and that was a really good result, and a lot of good information came from that, so I'm gonna say that's, I'm really comfortable with that. So let's look at it at committee, and...
Steve, here's what I'm gonna do, I'm not gonna withdraw my second, I think this is something that needs to be done, I think the county commissioners need to take a position on it. If you withdraw your motion and it does get taken off the table, then I'm gonna make the motion myself and see if I get a second.
You can't make a motion at a meeting, you're the chair.
What's that?
You cannot make a motion at a meeting, you're the chair.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough.
Well, I, I really, I would really appreciate, look, I really don't like just dropping bombs on people, and some of my brainstorms aren't that great, this is important to me, and we're gonna look at it, that's all I ask about.
That wasn't a bomb, you gave everybody the information prior to, they had the information in their hand to review it prior to, with any concerns, they could've contacted you.
It's not, I don't, I don't wanna contact, I want the discussion here, I want the discussion on the board, that's what I like. That's what I like to see, is some board discussion, so. So where are we at, what do we, rules of procedure here, what are we doing?
Well, if procedure says I can't make the, a motion being a chair, then, but I'm still not gonna withdraw my second. So what's the procedure now?
I'm not sure, I have to ask our county lawyer.
You vote on the motion as it was made.
Okay.
We're just passing it to full board, so we can, if the motion goes to full board, we can still...
We can pass it to the full board, we got two weeks to, to work on, you know, making some tweaks and stuff to it, if the tweaks aren't good, you can...
Tweak it, but we need to do our job. So the motion stands, any further discussion, we're gonna be taking...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, we just didn't, we gave two, two weeks for Joy's concerns, but we're not gonna give two weeks for Lisa's concerns.
Yes, we are.
No, I'm just saying, we, we delayed everything for two weeks on the health department, and now it just got moved to full board.
We didn't have the information here, so Lisa did a fantastic job from the health department, contacted Steve, contacted Joy, and we took the...
I understand that, and I'm, I'm just, I mean, the point, we...
Move on, you're just gonna bully it, let's go. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion passed.
Hold it.
That's right. I can't hear everything really well. Moving on to new business, we have no old business.
Chair, David, I have to leave right now, it's 7:30, so, you'll still have a quorum, but I do have something I have to attend to, so I'm gonna have to excuse myself, so thank you.
I'll call you.
Oh, yeah, that's good.
All right, moving on to 7A, ambulance mileage distribution for the city of Richmond. Can I have a motion?
Motion is sent to the full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. 7B, ambulance mileage distribution for Lynn Township. Can I have a motion?
Motion is sent to the full board.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. 7C, ambulance mileage agreement with Brockway Township. Have a motion?
Motion.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. 7D, Commissioner Samasko, District One, American Rescue Plan Project for Clyde Township.
Make a motion.
Have a second?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. 7E, Commissioner Samasko, District One, American Rescue Plan Project for Grant Township. Have a motion?
Motion is sent to the full board.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. 7F, Resolution 23-11, 2023 Summer Tax Levy L4029R. Have a motion? Do we have a motion for the summer tax levy to send to the full board? Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. 7G, Eddie Development LLC Loan Extension.
Before we get into it, Dave Struck is here, he can talk to you about, I think, some of the funds that the county had used. Can you talk about that a little, Dave?
Yeah, basically, so the county, as far as like economic development loan funds, that kind of thing, the county basically has grant funds that have come in through HUD through past years, that basically time has gone by, and the county is able to use them for any CDBGLs will-type project that needs a national objective, and things of that nature, so...
Which are very limited projects, which actually meet that criteria on that, too, and we had, basically, we had some funding, and that funding hadn't been touched in forever, it was making, it was, it was...
So, I mean, yeah, it could be projects that are, you know, economic development, community development-type projects, projects that are related to housing, housing projects, things like that.
And we were making, like, no money, the money was laying in the, you know, sitting in the bank at the time, very, very...
Yeah, it was just, was just kinda sitting, yeah.
Yeah, so the, so the intent, so the, so the, so the intent was to, that they had loaned it out at the time at a 3%, the developer's seeking an, an extension for another year, and they're going to pay a 5%, because like I said, a lot of times, these funds, we don't receive, it's not a lot, you know?
Well, we're gonna need a motion to send it to the full board.
I'm going to abstain, I am a tenant, a market rate tenant in that facility, just so people know, I do not have ownership stake at all or anything, but I have no problems with the, you know...
Okay, we're gonna, if we do have a motion and a second, then we'll have a discussion.
Motion is sent to the full board.
Do I have a second?
Support.
You seconded it, I'm sorry. All right. If you could, Carrie, if I read it correctly, they're gonna pay a $15,000 upfront fee, did I read that right?
So the interest for the loan that was already in existence was the $15,000, and that has been paid in, that's paid in full and up to date.
Okay. Now, potentially, if I read it correctly, it's also gonna be a balloon payment if it gets approved for another year, $250,000. They won't be making any payments until June of next year, or is there any set timeframe to make payments?
That's correct, the principal would be due June, or, on the due date next year, a balloon payment, yes, the June 22nd.
So like, so the 5% is being paid upfront? Or is that the 3% that was already due?
Well, the 3% that was already due has been paid, and then...
And could I ask when that was paid? It's not really important, but was it this year?
Yes, it was this year, and, and I don't know the specific date, but I can get that for you.
It's fine, because I'm saying potentially the 5% might be March of next year, February, whenever, just, so consideration for this. Has this been standard, and maybe you can help me with, Dave, has this happened before, where we've given a loan out for development, and we've had, or Carrie, that we've extended for a year, because right now, I'm concerned that if we extend the loan for an additional year, and it's not that much money, but whether it's 250,000, 2,500, or 2 and 1/2 million, whatever the amount is, if the person we gave the loan to had an agreement with the